Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, November 27, 2017. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 10, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Elliot. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Partalikio? I have not heard from him. Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Turk? I have not heard from him either. Mr. Bloom?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, my sworn in professionals, please. Approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Wow. Do you want to address the...
Rules Committee?
Rules Committee real quick?
Yeah, right now, two dates are available for most of the professionals. Mr. Troply's going to check tomorrow for me. It's either going to be Wednesday, December 6, or Monday, December 11. As soon as Mr. Troply gets back to me tomorrow, I will send an email out to all the professionals and the Rules Committee members for the date and time of the Rules Committee meeting. I'll also send them a copy of our yearly report so far.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolutions. Case number BA 16-12, New York SMSALP DBA Verizon Wireless, Wykoff Mill Road. Resolution, modifying approval to include the floodplain permit. Eligible voters: Armata, Mertens, Posh, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Mr. Armata?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Merton. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 12-13, Aldrin Lawn and Landscape. Resolution granting a three-year extension of time. Eligible voters: Armata, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. San Clemente?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 17-09, NAI Hanson Management as agent for Fairfield Industrial Park, LLC. Resolution granting use variance. Eligible voters: Armata, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. San Clemente?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Application before the Board. Case number BA 17-13, Stavola Leasing LLC. Interpretation of zoning ordinance. Application of Stavola Leasing LLC as applicant in I-Greenway LLC, or One-Greenway LLC, and Two-Greenway LLC is owner seeking an interpretation of zoning ordinance to determine if a variance or conditional use approval is required for L&amp;L paving to operate an asphalt plant on premises known as Block 177, 6201, formerly 62 and 64, 89, Yellowbrook Road. The application of Stavola leasing was originally scheduled for August 28, 2017, when it was carried with notice to September 11, 2017. And on September 11, 2017, it was carried to October 2, 2017, with no further notice. On October 2, 2017, the application was carried to November 13 with no further notice. After some testimony, this application was carried to November 27 with no further notice. Expiration date, December 30, 2017. Mr. Butler, Mr. Galizarowski, before we start, I just want to thank you all for the last meeting. You kept it straight to the ordinances. We didn't get into the application or try to get into that. And I think we concluded most of the professional testimony.
Correct.
And now, you know, our professionals have been cross-examined somewhat. And at this point, what I would like to do is the Board has a lot of questions for our professionals, at which time they will be available for further cross-examination.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Troply?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board, Council. Just want the record to reflect that I believe everyone has been in receipt of our Director of Land Use, Matt Howard's November 11th. Actually, I believe it meant to be a November 22 memo, and Mr. Howard can address that later on. I believe that's the case. I did speak briefly with Council today. I indicated to them that this has been disseminated to the Board. The Board has reviewed it. That I know there's probably going to be argument pro and con. I will certainly recommend to the Chair that Council can put their relative objections or agreements on the record regarding same before we continue. Depending on how the Board rules, if the Board determines that this is an exhibit, I would propose then, again, whichever way you would prefer, that Mr. Howard then be called to testify as a direct witness by the Board, subject, of course, to cross-examination and any and all rebuttal if there is a need to recall some other witnesses, depending on what happens. Again, the rules of evidence in cases of these sorts are relaxed to a great degree. And the idea here is to get all of the information out as possible. But having said that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Council. I'm going to ask them both to place their appearances on the record. And again, my recommendation to the Board is that this should go forward, but Council should have an ample time to place their objections if they wish on the record.
Before we move forward, I would also like to reiterate, I had asked Mr. Howard, Mr. Mallon, and Mika to please research the back history of the ordinances that we have on the book. This is exactly what I had requested from Mr. Howard. So, you know, just to put that on the record. That did come from me.
Very well, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, please place your appearances on the record and let's move forward.
Chairman, members of the Board, Ron Galizarowski here on behalf of the applicants of all leasing.
Good evening. My name is Michael Butler. I'm here on behalf of L&amp;L Paving and One and Two Greenway LLC.
Thank you, sir.
If I can start.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming Mr. Galizarowski's not going to object, but I strenuously object to Mr. Howard's report being added into the record tonight. First, tonight, it was my understanding that tonight's purpose was for closing arguments and not for new testimony or new evidence to be presented to the Board. Second, Mr. Chairman, you were very direct in how questions and testimony was put into the record at the last hearing, and you were very specific what was allowed in, what was not allowed in, and what the focus of that hearing was. And the focus of what we provided testimony on was what was a concrete product. This report from Mr. Howard does not address what is a concrete product. It addresses some other issue that I don't think is germane to what we discussed at the last hearing. And third, I received this memorandum at 4 o'clock on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It's entirely unfair to have this entered into the record without a chance to rebut or a chance to present testimony on it. You know, it's entirely unfair.
Okay. So noted. Mr. Galizarowski?
Yes, I also received it, probably the same done that Mr. Butler received his. And I'd like to remind the Board that when we began this hearing, the last time we were here, it was my colleague's representation to the Board that he was going to present the historic, so to say, a dialogue as to how, in his words, this type of an application for an oil or asphalt plan had historically been approved for the last 30 or 40 years. That was his representation to the Board. And frankly, in anticipation of that, in my preparation for my case, I had secured copies of all of those resolutions. Some of them had been secured by my expert, but also, my colleague provided a letter to Ms. Roberto attaching copies of all of those resolutions, which I would assume he believed that the Board would give consideration to. Those were sent into the Board for their consideration. When the case went forward several weeks ago, the only resolution that my colleague put forth was the one, I believe, for a concrete plant. So, when I look at the letter of Mr. Howard, there can be no surprise here. No surprise at all, because my colleague had copies of all of those resolutions prior to the start of this hearing. I had copies of all of those resolutions prior to the start of the hearing, and I anticipated cross-examining or questioning those resolutions in exactly the same way that Mr. Howard did. All Mr. Howard did was to give to the Board the historic history, as was requested, we now find out by the Chairman, as to how this municipality handled applications such as this or uses such as this through the years. Now, the reason why we're here this evening, I would submit respectfully, is that my colleague, when he made his application to the planning board, did not file first an application for a development permit. I don't believe he did. I've searched the files, and I don't see one there. This matter went directly to the planning board, the pending application before the planning board, and I think it might have been directed there by the Board Attorney. I believe that to be the case. So, what we have now is an applicant, rather, an applicant before the planning board who never files for a development permit. If he had, he would have posed this question to the zoning officer at that time. That didn't happen. The Chairman, in a desire to flesh out all of the nuances to this, I think made a perfectly responsible request to the zoning officer and said to him, hey, tell us what's happened in Howell Township for the past 50 years. And he told you. Now, it may very well be that my colleague doesn't like what the historic data shows, but that's what it shows. That's what zoning officers are supposed to do, and he did it. So, to argue that there's a surprise, that's just simply absurd. My colleague had all of these resolutions before this hearing even commenced. I had copies of all of the resolutions, and as a matter of fact, he sent copies of the resolutions to the Board Secretary. So, here we are today, and he's objecting, saying it's unfair. There's nothing to offer about this.
If I may respond?
Yes, sir.
Because there's a bunch of inaccuracies that just came out of my respective colleague's mouth. First, yes, I submitted all of the resolutions of approval. That is correct. I'm not saying that I didn't, because that shows the history of how concrete product uses were granted in Howell Township for the past 40 years. That was the crux of what our argument was at the last meeting. What's a concrete product? And how has that been interpreted over the past 40 years? That's why I submitted those resolutions of approval. That's it. There is no requirement to go and get a development permit before filing an application to the planning board. That's patently false. And I find it very disrespectful that my colleague over here next to me is besmirching the planning board attorney and saying that he directed or he is the one why we file with the planning board. I just find that out of... It's inappropriate at best.
Okay.
So, my issue with Mr. Howard's review memorandum is not that it provides a history. It's that the focus of it is asphalt and bituminous concrete production, which is what we didn't get into at the last hearing. Our argument the last hearing was simply what is a concrete product?
Okay.
In that box, what is a concrete product? And Mr. Howard's review memorandum goes outside of that box.
I don't think so. I would have to disagree to that, because, number one, we're here discussing the ordinances, how the township ordinances. If you read, you know, even in the introductory of the description, it says, "L&amp;L paving to operate an asphalt plant on premises..."
That's a...
Okay, that's clear.
That's a description that was for their application. That's not my application. That's not my description.
I totally understand that. But what I'm getting to, this is... The application before the planning board, which we will not get into, and I'm very clear about that, is to erect an asphalt plant.
A bituminous concrete...
A bituminous concrete plant.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. That's as far as we're going to go. We have to base... We have to look back in history and kind of see how the township viewed that through the years. Okay, Stavola has two asphalt plants, which one, I think, has been taken down now, Rosanna. The other one is right there on Yellowbrook Road. How did they come existence? What was the paper trail that brought them into existence? How did the township, back in those days, look at a permitted use and a non-permitted use, and what avenue they had to take to be permitted to use it? Okay, that's all I asked Mr. Howard to do, is I wanted to know the history of past variances, past resolutions, not necessarily what went in there, but based on the ordinance, what was required at that time. And I'm going to question Mr. Howard on some of that, which you can cross-examine him over. But, you know, I think it's relative to look back at the ordinances from that point to the point that we are today. You know, it gives the mindset of the township and what our forefathers... It's the same thing as the Constitution. You know, we look back 200, 300 years in what the mindset of our forefathers were to kind of guide us to the point that we are today. That's basically all I requested from Mr. Howard, is to find out where we were then to where we are now, to kind of let the Board judge and make their decision on the land use aspect of this interpretation. That's where I'm at. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Mallon if... A few questions real quick. Mr. Mallon, have you had a...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt?
Yes, sir.
Can I reserve my right to respond to Mr. Howard's review memo in writing, if need be?
Yes, sir.
After this hearing?
So noted. But if it comes to a vote, you know, then I don't know.
No, I agree. I think it's something that we can address later on in tonight, but I would like to reserve my right to respond, having received this Wednesday before Thanksgiving, with Municipal Office not open again until today.
Okay, I'm going to turn to Council on that one.
Let me just clarify that. I have no idea if the case will be finished tonight or not. Are you suggesting that the vote should be put off if, in fact, it's going that way?
The issue, however, the issue, I can't predict, so I'm just reserving my right to make that argument in the future as we get towards the end of this hearing, to allow me to appropriately address whatever's brought up in Mr. Howard's testimony or in his review memorandum, because I haven't had a chance to. You know, for anyone, any applicant who comes in front of the Board or any professional, you try to get stuff to the Board 10 days prior to a hearing, so there's enough room, enough time for the Board and for the public and for anyone else to review that information. I'm just asking for that right to be able to address it, if need be. And I may not need to. I'm just reserving my right to have that discussion, so it doesn't come out of the blue later when we move on with the... Through the rest of the presentation.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Given under the circumstances. So, at this point, the objection is noted. Mr. Chair, I assume you've made your ruling?
Yes, sir.
On this... So, with that, shall we proceed with Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir. First, I'm going to ask Mr. Mallon. Mr. Mallon, have you reviewed Mr. Howard's memorandum?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any comments?
The only thing I... I mean, it's more of a fact-finding than an opinion.
Okay.
The way I read it. He just gave a history of the cases that he found and with the ordinances, with the help. As far as his report, that's the way I looked at it. I have other things to add, but I didn't do it in a report, other than what's in my letter.
Okay.
But there's things I can add to that if you wish to have me proceed.
Well, let's address Mr. Howard's first, and then we'll go... We'll move forward to your letter. Mika, were you able to review Mr. Howard's memorandum?
Yes, I did.
Do you have any comment?
Not... I mean, as Mr. Mallon stated, it's more as a history, and it did provide me with more history of what the, you know, the town, earlier ordinances were.
Okay. Mr. Howard, do you want to just give us a brief summary of your memo, and then, you know, I'm going to turn it over to the Board if they have questions? And then also, I will finish up with my questions that I have.
Sure.
Okay?
The purpose of the memorandum was, just as Jack said, ultimately a fact-finding mission. I have copies of every ordinance that the town has passed in my office, at my disposal, at the request of the Chairman. I began to research from the beginning of our ordinances, which is 1957. On the first page, I simply list all the permitted uses, as well as several prohibited uses that were in the ordinance at that time. Specifically, in 1963, there was an adopted amendment to the ordinance, which stated that in the industrial zone, asphalt batching plants, asphalt plants, asphalt mixing plants, or asphalt manufacturing plants were prohibited from the zone. That was my fact-finding for the 1957 ordinance. In 1979, we had a new ordinance come in. The industrial zone had a different list of permitted uses. I provided those. What I noticed was that the explicit and specific ban on asphalt-type plants, manufacturing, was removed from the ordinance. I simply state that. Further, I state that the permitted uses in the zone hadn't changed in the 1983, 1992, 1994 ordinance. There's a couple additions in, but nothing specific to asphalt plants that were... That's pertinent to this case. Also, in 1989, the zone was renamed from industrial to Special Economic Development, SED. 1997 was the next ordinance change. That existed generally to what was listed as permitted in 2016, all the way through There might have been a few small changes, but nothing, again, pertinent to the case. I provide you the permitted uses, and I put emphasis on the fact that manufacturing of stone, glass, clay, and concrete products were permitted from 1997 through 2016. I further went on to look at all of the resolutions of approval that were provided by Council. All I simply did was a cursory review of these. I read them. I took the proposed use. I looked what they were asking for, what type of application it was, whether it was site plan or variance. Or back in the '60s, we had something called a use permit that went in front of the Board of Adjustment, but it wasn't necessarily a variance. The ordinance at the time read that any permitted use in the industrial zone had to get a use permit from the Board of Adjustment. So, it doesn't necessarily mean it was a variance. It was actually confirming that it was permitted. In my research, I found one case from the 1957 ordinance. That was Lynn Carr, Board of Adjustment, case 84. And that was just this, a use permit. Not necessarily a variance, but a use permit for a permitted use in the industrial zone. And that use was a bituminous concrete plant with scale house and office. The resolution doesn't state how it was determined to be permitted. That would have to be looked at with the permitted uses at the time, but nonetheless, it was deemed to be permitted explicitly in that resolution.
Now, this 1963?
That was 1963, May of 1963, which is before the ban, which was September of 1963.
Okay. So, the ban came in September 1963?
Correct.
Okay.
So, after the ban was put in place, there was a case, Board of Adjustment, case 116, Fred McDowell. Council could probably speak to this, but I believe the time of decision rules were different than time of application, where right now, if an ordinance changes after an application, you're bound by the old ordinance. Back then, it was... The ordinance can change up until the decision was made. So, that's what appears to be what happened here. The case was made 1962. The ordinance changed in the middle of a hearing, and that case did get a variance in February of 1964, after the ban was in place. Continuing in that same timeframe, Lynn Carr Corporation was... There was record of a site plan number 224. The township is not in possession of this resolution. We cannot find it in our files. The township has lost files, from what I understand, in the past between floods and maybe even a fire. So, the fact that we don't have that isn't... It's not the only thing we're missing. There were two extensions of times, in 1975, 1977, based on that same application.
That's on 224, correct?
Correct. And that was a site plan application that seemed to be in 1974. It was after the ban in 1963, and it was before the ordinance change in 1979. I'm not clear on how a site plan application was allowed to proceed. I actually gave a quote from the minutes of the site plan hearing, 224, and it discusses... If I can summarize it, maybe I'll read the whole thing. "The chairman at the time inquired as to how long the applicant has been at the present location. The applicant replied, 'Since 1964.' Upon inquiry as to whether it was a permitted use or if they had received a variance, Mr. Stout replied, 'They had a variance.'" "Board Attorney Akazano, upon question from Chairman Brown, stated that this is an expansion of a conforming use, and there was no objection here." That's the only mention of the use and how it was determined to be permitted or not. Board can...
But may I ask a question here?
Sure.
Okay, it says if it was a variance, then it couldn't be a conforming. It'd be a non-conforming, correct?
I agree.
Okay.
It seems like, based on the quote, I mean, and the limited information we have, that probably should have been a variance application for an expansion of a non-conforming. that probably should have been a variance application for an expansion of a non-conforming.
Okay.
And that's what I state at the bottom of page three of the memorandum. Jumping forward into 1979 timeframe, after the 1979 ordinance took effect, we had a site plan dash 529 application, and that was for a concrete plant, to operate as a concrete plant. That was a site plan application. George Harms came in front of the board, received site plan approval in 1989 for a site plan 677. They also had some revisions to the site plan in 1992. In 1992, they actually removed the concrete plant from their plans, but nonetheless, it was approved in 1989 with a site plan for a concrete plant.
Now, was that before the zoning board, or was that before the planning?
That was the planning board. That was a site plan application.
Okay.
And then in 1997, as the ordinance changed to what it was in 2016, before the most recent change, we had two applications come in front of the board. Both were site plans. Anchor Concrete Products was Site Plan 772, and that was for manufacturing of concrete blocks. In 19, in 2007, Cur Concrete Pipe came with Site Plan Application 899, and that was for a concrete pipe manufacturing facility.
An extension of use, correct?
I believe so, yes. I don't have, I would have to double-check the wording. That's the summary of the resolutions that were provided to us by council. Like I said, I reviewed all the resolutions. I just picked out pertinent points of what the use was, what was proposed, and what board it went to, what variances were issued, if any. Ultimately, looking at this, the township seems to be pretty consistent in their ruling. Since the 1963 ban, asphalt manufacturing facilities have not been approved, and whether that is my predecessors telling people at the window, you know, "You're not gonna get approved for this, go away. This is not a permitted use," I don't know. But it could be a lack of application just for that use, that nobody's come before us for that, so we don't have a specific denial on record. But the record speaks for itself in the history that asphalt manufacturing, asphalt batching, asphalt mixing plants have not been permitted by the township since the 1963 ban, with the exception of, I'd say, the Lynn Carr application in 1974. That seems to be one that just doesn't fit the mold, based on the information I provided. I don't understand the reasoning fully.
Okay. Board, board members, do y'all have questions? Mr. Matt, Mr. Howard?
One question. Mr. Howard, the Stavola, the chairman said that there is an asphalt plant. Do you know when that was approved?
I actually haven't followed the name changes so much. So, I'm not sure which one Stavola was approved under. I could say that Lynn Carr in Case 84, May 9, 1963, is the only approval really that was permitted at the time for an asphalt plant.
Okay.
I tried to keep the specific names and the owners of the sites and who was operating them out, because I didn't wanna draw any conclusions based on that. I didn't want any bias coming in, so I focused mostly on the facts of who it was at the time.
Well, you really can't, because if, bringing Stavola into it, if they haven't come to expand the use, then they wouldn't be on file anyway, because they wouldn't have a resolution, or, you know, there wouldn't be anything.
Unless they went to the board.
Right. Mr. Ramada, any questions? Mr. Brown? Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. Mertens?
No.
Mr. Plaush? Okay.
Mr. Gazereski?
Mr. Howard, you are familiar with the ordinance which was in place in 2016, correct?
Correct.
And that ordinance makes reference to the manufacturing of, I believe it's, clay, stone, glass, and concrete products.
Correct.
And that was permitted, correct?
Correct.
As the zoning officer, Director of Planning, is, under that ordinance, would the manufacturing of asphalt be permitted?
I'm gonna object to that question.
So noted.
Do you want me to answer?
No. No. I, I think that's already been answered before, but, Mr. Howard, you can answer that.
I mean, I don't, first, I don't think it's ever been answered, and I think what council is trying to do is get into an interpretation of if asphalt, bituminous concrete, is permitted in the zone. And that's what, not what Mr. Howard, his report was, what I heard, was not an opinion, rather, it's a history of what's happened in the past.
Okay. Then, Mr. Howard, I'm gonna say no answer that question. Mr. Gazereski?
I'm sorry, you've granted his objection to my asking the question?
Yes, sir. I granted his objection, because Mr. Howard's not deciding what a concrete product is. That's not up to Mr. Howard. He's not a professional in that aspect. He went back through the ordinances, read the ordinances. Yes, it stated that there's concrete products.
Okay.
But it's not up to him to decide if asphalt is a concrete product, or a concrete product. However, he's not a professional.
In the year of 2016, under the then-existing ordinance, was the manufacturing of asphalt permitted?
Once again, it's the same question.
No, stop.
That's the same question.
That's it.
What council, what council's trying to do is, he's trying to get an opinion out of Mr. Howard as to what's permitted in the zone, whether an asphalt, bituminous manufacturing concrete facility is permitted underneath the zoning ordinance. That's what he's trying to do. And what we did last time, during our hearing, at the last hearing, was we didn't get into that issue.
Correct.
The issue was specifically, what is a concrete product?
That's correct. We kinda kept it, Mr. Gazereski, we did keep that out of it.
Well, if you keep it, if you're limited to saying, what is a concrete product, then he certainly can opine whether or not asphalt is a concrete product or not. And he says, in his summary, very clearly, the site, based on the above cases, the township has not permitted any asphalt manufacturing facility development since the ban of 1963. So, if he says that, why can't I ask him?
Because you're asking him about existing, or, in 2016, an existing ordinance. You're asking him if it's permitted in its own. He stated clearly in 1963 that asphalt plants were prohibited and banned. Okay, that's never been taken out of the ordinances that I know of. It's never been addressed or rescinded.
I agree with all of that.
In any ordinance. So, Mr. Howard can't tell you if a concrete product is an asphalt product. We did not go into that direction.
I didn't ask him that question. The second question was, in 2016, under the then-existing ordinance, or any ordinance in the township of Howell, was the manufacturing of asphalt permitted?
Once again, that gets into...
Yeah, but I'm gonna let, let Mr. Howard, he's our zoning officer, I'm gonna let him answer this question, based on the 2016 ordinance.
Manufacturing of asphalt plants, or any type of batching or mixing facility, was not explicitly and specifically mentioned as a permitted use in the zone.
Okay.
The question was whether or not it was permitted. That was the question.
He just answered it.
He answered it.
He just answered it. You wanna repeat your answer, please?
Asphalt manufacturing facilities, batching facilities, mixing facilities, were not listed specifically in the SED zone in 2016.
Thank you. Further questions?
I have, I have no further questions of this witness, but I, once again, request that his letter be marked and entered into evidence.
Okay. So, Mr. Butler?
Mr. Howard, can you provide me with your expertise? What's your qualifications?
I have a master's degree.
I don't object to this line of questioning, because I was, I was not permitted to ask him for his opinion, so...
He didn't try to ask that question.
Let me finish, please.
No.
He stated very clearly that his letter was really a historic overview, and that he did not opine, but rather, he simply recited what was in the ordinances.
And then, so noted... And Chairman, you let him answer that question regarding what his opinion is about what's permitted in the zone?
Well, Mr. Howard is our land use officer.
I understand that.
Employed by the township. I, I think, I'm gonna let Mr. Tropoli answer that question.
I think you could take notice of the fact that he is our land use official, and in that capacity, whether or not he has a BA degree, an MA degree. He's not here to testify on, on any manufacturing facility. Quite frankly, I think the question is inappropriate, because he is here. He is the land use opinion, and quite frankly, you can weigh his opinion together with anyone else's opinion, and reject it or accept it. So, I'm just gonna indicate that I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, it's not relevant, thank you.
Okay.
He is a land use official.
Okay. What is your current position with Howell Township?
Director of Land Use.
And how long have you had that position?
14 months.
Okay, and you spoke about your, and you just talked about your November 11, 2000, or, is it November 11th?
Should've been 22nd. November 22nd.
2017 memorandum. And that's not being, you're not offering that as a, as an opinion on, is it more of a history?
I think it speaks for itself, in the fact that it is.
Okay. And when did you author this memorandum?
The days leading up to November 22, 2017.
Did you speak to anyone prior to or during the time you drafted the memorandum?
During the time of my research?
Yes.
Internal?
Internal, external?
Internally, I spoke to a few people about my research. Externally, after the request came in, I don't believe I did.
And who internally did you speak to?
My Director of Community Development, Jim Herman.
And what did you review to produce your memorandum?
All the ordinance that I listed in the memorandum, including 1957, 1979, 1983, 1992, 1994, 1997, several through the 2000s, up until 2016, as well as the new ordinance passed in 2017.
Did you review the LNL 2016 Minor Site Plan Application and Resolution of Approval?
I did not.
Why not?
The, the resolution that was provided, I did. The application itself, not specifically.
Okay. Why did you not include the 2016 Resolution of Approval in your memorandum?
I felt like it was hitting very close to home on what we're deciding here, in terms of the actual case that, the site that the application is, that this is set to determine, and the history was, all, the purpose of the memorandum was really to give the history leading up until this case.
Why was it hitting close to home?
Because ultimately, I felt like we were talking about the same site, the same case that we're dealing with right now, and I wanted to talk about all the other cases that have been dealt with in the past.
So, you left out a resolution concerning an approval for an office and construction yard for a bituminous manufacturing facility?
Objection to the question. I have to agree with Mr. Gazereski, because we had stated we wanted to keep your application before the planning board totally out of this.
It's not the present application. It's the prior application, which was, which our resolution of was provided to Mr. Howard for his review. He did not include that in his detailed memorandum on the history of the ordinances and the resolutions and approvals given based on those ordinances.
Okay.
But, may I follow up, please?
Yes, sir.
The thing is, my objection was, I thought he referred to it being for an office and yard for the, for...
That's what I heard.
...manufacturing of bituminous concrete. That's not what it was for.
I disagree. 100%. That's what the application was for, that's what the resolution of approval was for.
You show me in the resolution where it says, "Manufacturing of bituminous concrete."
It says, "The use of the property for an office and construction yard for bituminous concrete manufacturing use."
Show me in the resolution where it says it.
On page 13, you know where it is.
Is that, are you referring to the notice that was published, or the resolution?
I'm talking about the resolution.
That's it, please.
But still, Mr. Howard did not include that resolution, no mention of that resolution, nor that approval, nor that application was in his review memorandum.
Well, is that, okay, let's back up here. Mr. Gazereski, is that what you're objecting to? Is that, that prior approval?
There was, yeah, there was no, there was no approval for the construction of a bituminous concrete plant? That was the second application that was made to the planning board.
Okay. I, I'm at a loss, because I haven't seen any resolution.
Okay, the resolution, the resolution was entered into the record as '07.
I think the simple answer to the question here is that, for whatever reason, Mr. Howard didn't review it.
Correct.
Period. End of story.
Well, I think the answer to the question was, Mr. Howard reviewed it and decided not to include it in his, in his memorandum. Am I correct, Mr. Howard?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Did you review my client's current application in front of the planning board?
I did not.
Did you review any of the current resolution, any review memorandums from CME, Ms. Apti's firm, regarding my client's current application in front of the, so, the planning board, which said, "There's no, no use variance is required"?
I did not.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we, I thought we decided that this was not gonna be before this board.
Sir, I think it's relevant for what he, what he is asking. He's not getting into details of the application?
Nope. Did you review Stavola's current application in front of the planning board regarding its property across the street on the other road that contains a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility?
I did not.
Did you review any memorandum from CME associates concerning Stavola's application?
Of course, in the resolution.
I did not.
Did you review any court cases in your preparation of your, of your review memorandum?
Yes.
What court cases did you review?
You'll have to give me a moment to get the reference. It was a case between Superior Court of New Jersey, appellate division, docket number A 512413T3, A 3132-14T3.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the caption? The title?
It's Township of LePaccon, Township of LePaccon Planning Board, defending against several plaintiffs.
Okay, that's, that's good enough. You gave, you gave the docket number and the, and the title. What exactly are you saying in your memorandum? What is, what is your conclusion?
My conclusion is to provide the board with the...
No, no, what's the conclusion of your...
I'll get there. I've provided the board the history. I've provided a description of the cases provided, how the township has dealt with it in the past, and I've concluded that it does not appear that asphalt plants have been permitted since the 1963 ban.
When you say permitted, what, what do you mean?
By a board application to include asphalt batch, batching, mixing, and the like.
So, another way to say it is that there are no, there have been no applications since 1974 for a asphalt or bituminous concrete manufacturing facility in the Township of Howell?
I, I, Mr. Howard, LNL has an application for the planning board, so that answer would be...
Right.
There is one since 1974.
Okay. Between 2016 and 1974, were there any applications for a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility in the Township of Howell?
I can't speak to every case in Howell, because I don't have the means to search every block and lot in the town to know that. I know, provided with what was given to us in that timeframe, the resolutions that I reviewed, my memo speaks to exactly what was approved, and how it was approved.
So, that's no?
Correct.
Correct, there are, there have been...
Well, between 1974, the exception, the exception of Lynn Carr...
From your research?
With the, the exception of Lynn Carr, which I've discussed, and the inconsistency on how that was dealt with, I believe, that everything else was concrete manufacturing facilities.
Okay, so, there have been no bituminous, applications for a bituminous manufacturing concrete facility between 19, between 2016 and 1974?
Sure, he can only, he can only answer...
He's already...
From, from his research. I'm just clarifying.
Just from your research? Just from your research, man?
As I've documented in my memo.
Okay. You said something before that you're not sure why, that maybe your predecessors said, "Don't try it, it's not permitted." Do you have any basis for that?
Nope.
So that's just, no basis?
It's a possible explanation as to why the case hasn't come in front of the board.
But you have no basis for that?
Let me finish his answer, please.
Yeah, Mr. Howard?
As I said in my memo, it's possibly due to a lack of application. We don't have any documentation specifically for asphalt manufacturing plants, or, as you said, people could have been turned away in the past. I can't, I don't know every conversation my predecessors have had.
Okay. And you said before that in 1963 that there was a ban on asphalt Batuminous Concrete Manufacturing Facilities?
Correct.
But that ban wasn't carried over until the 1979 ordinance?
That is correct.
Do you give any weight to the fact that the township knew what it was doing when it adopted the 1979 ordinance and did not include that ban?
I can't say that I can.
He wasn't back there at that time.
I know. I'm simply asking the question.
I don't know what they were thinking at the time.
In 1963, there was. In 1979, when it was codified, it wasn't carried over.
Correct.
Correct.
But it wasn't omitted.
It wasn't carried over.
There's a lot of things, some, you know, within the ordinances that a lot of times aren't carried over, but it's a practice of the township.
And to that same point, I would say that they didn't add it as a permitted use at that time either.
But they didn't specifically carry that prohibition over. You have to, you have to be able to believe that the body making a decision, putting in place.
Is counsel testifying now? I mean, really? Because you wanna get sworn to be testified.
Well, Mr. Gazarovski, fairness to counsel, I'm sure that'll be covered in his closing remarks, but let's just stick with the questioning of Mr. Howard right now.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions at this time for Mr. Howard. However, I am going to reserve my right to respond to all the testimony that's provided by Mr. Howard. And I don't think we're finishing tonight because I think I have to come back with an expert testimony.
Okay. So now.
Mr. Chairman, we are coming, please. Obviously, his request with regard to a written summation, whatever it may be, that's within the purview of the chairman, and I respect that. But counsel made a representation with regard to the prior application of LNL paving on the site, and he made the specific representation that it was an application for a Batuminous Concrete Plant, and that was in the resolution. It's simply not. That's been marked in evidence. She referred to page 13. Page 13 is a copy of a notice that was sent to the newspaper reflecting the fact that a resolution was memorialized. In that notice, which is not a part of the resolution, there's reference to a Batuminous Concrete Manufacturing Plant. I don't know who prepared the notice. The notice was prepared incorrectly. The notice can only reflect or memorialize what supposedly was in a resolution. If counsel can show me where in the body of the resolution, there's a reference to the fact that either in the application or in the resolution itself, there's an approval of something relative to a concrete, rather, a Batuminous Concrete Plant, then I'll certainly withdraw my motion. You said it was in there. Show it to me. It's simply not.
It is.
Well, show it to me.
It's part of the record.
Now, wait a second. Wait a second.
Let's move forward.
I just wanna just really clarify this. This is just a lot of baloney that's laying sin there. It's in a notice, no place else.
It's part of the resolution, Mr. Gazarovski.
Show it to me.
It's part of the resolution.
Say it. Notice is the part of the resolution.
Mr. Gazarovski, please. Thank you.
Let me ask a question. Was that resolution provided as?
Yes, it was. It's marked in evidence as '07.
We have that in as '07?
That's why. Yes.
Do you have that?
I do.
Have you reviewed it?
I surely have. Frankly, I've reviewed it.
I haven't reviewed it, so I.
Well, Charlie continually said to me, "It's in the resolution." I must've read it eight times, I couldn't find it. He said it's to the last page. Went to the last page, which is page 13. It's not the resolution, it's the notice sent to the newspaper.
That's true. Mr. Mallon, I'm gonna task you for that, to review that, please, briefly. We're gonna take about a five-minute, you know, give you enough time to review that. We're gonna take a recess.
What do you want me to review?
The resolution.
Okay.
Please. We'll re-adjourn at 8:30.
The zoning board will now reconvene?
Okay. Mr. Mallon, whenever we went to break, I requested you to review a resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution for LNL paving, application of SP 1026, approved September 1st, 2016, memorialized October 6th. Based upon the, first of all, I have not seen the application, it's the first I've seen this.
Correct.
Right? Based upon the resolution, the application is for a site that contains a concrete manufacturing facility that has a manufacturer building, shop building, office building, outdoor storage areas, driveway openings. The applicant is seeking a minor site plan for an office and construction yard, rehabilitate the existing office and shop building, provide parking areas around the shop building, as well as with areas at the front of the building and north with the parking of associated vehicles, trucks. He also proposes to put an above-ground tank for pavement sealer material, and two above-ground fuel storage tanks, placement of other items and improvements. From my reading, it's an existing concrete facility, and they were doing minor modifications to the site, not to the operation of the concrete facility. That was pre-existing. That was what the site plan, a minor site plan was for.
Okay. Where in there, is there anything that says Batuminous Asphalt Concrete?
No, nothing. Nothing mentioned.
Okay.
There's nothing that I could see in here, anything about asphalt, Batuminous Concrete, or anything. It just stipulates it's an existing concrete facility, concrete manufacturing facility.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mallon. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, I wanna, Mr. Mallon had sent a letter, your August 14th letter, and you amended it August 15th. Do you have any further?
No. The only thing I would say, I've been associated with the municipality for 30 years.
Yes, sir.
We have never looked at an asphalt plant as a permitted use in my sitting here. I can't say I sit at the planning board at all times, but I pretty much have been the Board of Adjustment almost all of that time. I think I was out of here for one year. We've always looked at the ordinance. If it's listed as permitted, it's permitted. If it's not listed, it's not permitted.
Okay.
And that's been pretty much straightforward. That's how we've always, in my readings, in my experience, we've always looked at it that way. So it's not twisted here. If it doesn't say it explicitly, it's not permitted.
Okay.
That's the way we've always looked at it. I don't have any further points to say.
Okay.
And I think I said that in my letter, basically.
Yes, you did. Mika, do you have any further testimony?
Not, my memo of August 18th, 2017, I still do stand with that opinion. As a planner, we are asked to look at the ordinances, and that's exactly what I did. I looked at the ordinance, what's permitted and what's not permitted. And I also found that in the Howell Land Use Ordinance, per section 18850, it does say that no land, lot, or premises, or no building or structure shall be used for any other purpose than those permitted under the articles for the zone in which it's located. Based on that, I still stand by my opinion that if the use is not expressly permitted, it's not permitted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Tropoli.
Mr. Chairman, we come at a time in this application, as we do with many applications, where I will ask the litigants, are we finished, gentlemen? With the exception of Mr. Butler's request, which I'll address shortly. Mr. Gazarovski?
You know, questions were posed to Mr. Howard, and reference was made to the resolution, which had earlier been marked and now reviewed by Mr. Mallon. I also have with me, which I think we should mark, is a copy of the application which the LNL paving made to the planning board relative to that resolution, a copy of the agenda for that hearing, a copy of the notice of publication for the hearing, as well as a copy of the transcript of that hearing, which is dated September 1st of 2016. Now, the transcript itself, and by the way, all of this, of course, was brought up by my colleague. He's the one who referred to that earlier hearing. So the transcript of the hearing before the planning board, when LNL appeared before the planning board with their application for what they want, is most telling because that hearing is reflected in the resolution. There is no reference in the transcript of the word asphalt or Batuminous Concrete. I think they are, they should be made a part of the record for this hearing in light of the fact that my colleague opened that up.
And that was for that prior resolution, correct?
Pardon me?
The prior resolution?
Yes.
That's the transcript?
Yes.
I'm gonna object to those being entered into the record. I don't know the veracity of what he's trying to enter into the record. I don't know if it's the full application. I don't see any plans there. So I don't know what he's trying to enter into the record at the moment.
Tell you what, I'll just move the transcript itself because that'll tell you the entire story. Now, if you're thinking I doctored the transcript, you know, please tell me. You said I didn't read the resolution correctly, and you were wrong.
Once again, I think that's an unfair comment.
I will. I do, I agree. That's unfair comment.
Yep.
We'll move the resolution into evidence.
The resolution's already.
Not the resolution, but the transcript.
Do you want to see it?
Transcript only.
Thank you.
Is it? What is it? Maybe, I don't know who took it.
Hello?
Is it certified?
Yes.
Or is it? What's the front page say? I mean, yeah, she's official transcriber. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
May we have a marking?
Mr. Tropoli, before you mark, may I just represent for the record that I, in fact, ordered that transcript from the Ford Secretary. I received the disc. I had it transcribed by Tracy Gribbin, who is a court reporter. And I'll provide the board with a bound copy, the original copy, which I had.
Okay, very well.
I'll allow that.
Okay. We can use that one for now. Having said that, and just in an attempt to be fair to all sides, I made the observation earlier, noting Mr. Butler's objection and reservation of rights, there will be no vote tonight. I'm making that recommendation to the board. I want the arguments that are made to, you know, regarding Mr. Howard's memo, the short-time nature of it, to be looked at a little further, I think, by the board. I'm gonna give these gentlemen here the opportunity to submit their writing, to submit in writing, I should say, their objections, pro and con, to this matter involving Mr. Howard. From my perspective, and again, gentlemen, I started by asking the question. It would appear to me that testimony is concluded at this point. Would that be a fair comment? Mr. Gazarovski?
My testimony at this point.
And Mr. Butler?
No. My testimony is not concluded.
Okay. I'd like a proffer because in life, as in zoning, there has to be finality. So no problem.
Tonight, there was an opinion rendered regarding asphalt facilities and.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Tonight, there was an opinion rendered regarding asphalt facilities and whether they're permitted in the SED zone.
Chairman, specifically.
Underneath the ordinance, you allowed Mr. Howard to make that representation. I would like to provide testimony to refute that.
Do you plan on offering it tonight?
No, I do not. I didn't hear Mr. Howard's opinion until he was allowed to enter it into the record this evening. I have no witnesses available at the moment. Having just heard Mr. Howard's opinion that an asphalt manufacturing facility is not permitted in the SED zone, is that correct?
That's our land use, that's our land use officer. He has to go by the same thing our professionals go by. That's correct.
But at the last hearing, we didn't get into that issue. The issue solely was, what is a concrete product?
We're not into that issue now.
How are we not into that issue if he's making it?
The question is, is a concrete, does the ordinance, does the ordinance state that a Batuminous Asphalt Concrete Plant is a permitted use, conditional use, or it's not either one?
That wasn't, that wasn't the question. What was, what we testified about at the last hearing, and what was, what we narrowed the testimony on was concrete products. We tried to talk about, I had Mr. Sanford up here to try to talk about Batuminous Concrete Products, and he wasn't permitted to do so because the narrow focus was, what's a concrete product?
Okay.
I now need to address whether Batuminous Concrete is a concrete product.
Okay. I'm not gonna allow that, and here's why. I'll give you my opinion on that. Number one, we didn't go there, even tonight with Mr. Howard's opinion. He is basing his opinion on the past. Our ordinances from 1957 to date, his opinion was that it wasn't permitted. Reason being, back in 1963, correct me if I'm wrong with the date, it was clearly banned, that asphalt plants, concrete manufacturing plants, batch plants, I know it's not verbatim what it stated, but it was banned at that point. His opinion was, his, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Howard, your opinion was based on the past history, correct?
It was based on the past history and the exact wording of the 2016 ordinance, which black and white doesn't say anything about asphalt.
That was his opinion. That's how he answered that.
That's correct. So then the question becomes, is asphalt, Batuminous Concrete, a concrete product?
But see.
Because what his opinion is saying, and correct me if I'm not, if I'm saying this incorrectly, he's saying Batuminous Concrete is not a permitted use in the zone.
That's not what he stated, though.
What did you state?
I stated that specifically in the 2016 ordinance, asphalt is not mentioned. I mean, I've said it several times in many different ways.
That's what he said. He's not testifying.
So then the question is, what is asphalt? And asphalt is Batuminous Concrete. They're one and the same.
But that's not the testimony that Mr. Howard placed on the record.
That's not what he's testifying to.
You're reserving, and again, in all fairness, Mr. Butler, you're reserving your rights to challenge the testimony.
Correct.
I understand that. But he didn't render an opinion. He gave a historical narration of what he found, and what the board is able to do is to weigh it, accept it or reject it, all in part.
I 100% agree that he presented, originally presented, a historical review of the ordinances. After that, Mr. Gazarovski was allowed to ask a question, whether asphalt manufacturing was permitted in the SED zone, over my objection.
Okay. And he?
And his answer was, no.
Mr. Howard, that wasn't his answer. Would you please repeat your answer?
The answer was that it was asphalt manufacturing, mixing, batching plant is not specifically listed in the permitted uses at that time. That is based on black and white of what the ordinance says. I'm not offering an opinion on that. That is what the ordinance says, or does not say.
Mr. Tropoli.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, having heard your ruling, that Mr. Butler should be given, as Mr. Gazarovski should be given, their opportunities to submit writings, pro and con, on Mr. Howard's testimony to be sub. writings, pro and con, on Mr. Howard's testimony, to be supplemented by oral argument at the next meeting. That's my opinion. I mean, I, I'll submit it for your consideration. And I want to give Mr. Butler every opportunity, as I want to give Mr. Gazarovski every opportunity to place their objections or their concurrences on the record. But I think the board at this point in time needs a writing. And having said that, and having heard the fact that you're indicating, Mr. Chairman, that you will not permit any further test, no further testimony.
I, I don't, do not want to go in the differences of concrete. That, that's for, that, that's not what we're here to decide.
Counsel will be permitted, obviously, at, during the closing arguments, to make whatever, uh, arguments they wish regarding that topic.
Yes.
But in terms of what Mr. Butler has requested, uh, I understand, Mr. Butler, you would like to submit a writing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What I, again, and just so everyone knows, our last meeting of the year, and there will be some changes on the board, will be December 18th. And I would like to give the board ample opportunity to review final submissions regarding, I believe, just this issue. That's what you've asked about. Correct, Mr. Butler? I'm not asking for written summations. I'm asking-
On, based on the, on the, the opinion of Mr. Howard?
Correct. Um, and Mr. Gazarovski, I'm about to say something, but I see the-
Well, I, I only have, I mean, counsel, as I recall, the comments was to the effect that bituminous concrete and asphalt are one in the same. I accept that. Uh, Mr. Howard, uh, has given you a historic background, saying in 1963, uh, manufacturing asphalt was banned. Uh, I don't want, uh, I don't think there could be no further testimony in this writing. For example, presumably, Mr. Butler wants to make the argument that if you-
I'm, I'm not, uh-
Just, I want to get it in the room.
I mean, right, right now, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know what argument I'm going to make. I could make the argument that the sky is pink, but-
We'll, we'll save it for written argument at, at the next meeting. We'll, we'll save everything for written argument.
I, I really-
You know, just please, just-
I don't think, I don't believe that's necessary. I think that we should move to closing comments, and the board should decide this case. If they want a reserved decision until the next meeting, fine, but all of the evidence is in. There's no further evidence coming in. The idea of a written submission that's going to comment on that evidence, that's for this board to decide. There's no need for that.
I didn't, uh, no, you missed, perhaps I misspoke, I'm not sure, but I don't think so. Um, I want Mr. Butler to, to place his objections in writing.
Okay.
On the issue solely of whether or not it was appropriate for the board to accept Mr. Howard's testimony tonight.
That's fine.
That's it. I'm not asking for written summations. Uh, what I had in mind, and again, I, I think the chair has already ruled that testimony is closed. Is that correct?
So the only question is, was Mr. Howard's, uh, was the request of the chairman, of Mr. Howard, to prepare such a report in that report, is that what?
I don't want the qualification going in like that.
I'll, I'm going to let, this is what I have in mind, gentlemen, just to put it out there. Um, December 5th, Mr. Butler, I would like to have whatever, uh, documentation, pardon me, now whatever writing you have submitted to the board by December 5th. Mr. Gazarovski, response by December 12th. This way, the board will have everything in, and I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, you'll have the documents, it can consider them at that point in time. If there's an additional ruling you need to make, that's fine. If not, then we proceed directly into closing arguments and decision on the 18th.
Okay.
Not written summations, gentlemen, just addressing the limited issue of tonight's proceeding.
Mr. Howard's testimony.
That's fine.
Period.
I don't bother that, sure.
Excuse me, Ron. So then, uh, we're going to have all the documentation by the 12th, then we can review for the 18th?
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Sanford.
I'm just-
Thank you.
Subject to your review, but I think that would be ample time. I know that if I were under the deadline, it would, you know, I don't expect the, the, um, the submissions to be extensive, but they are what they'll be. But I think a week is enough time to do it. In all fairness to both parties.
Mr. Chairman, would it not be helpful if Mr. Howard provided to the board, uh, copies of the resolutions and the ordinances which he referred to in his letter, so the board members have it before them as they-
We, we have most of them.
Okay, is there anything else, gentlemen, that we need to discuss before we break tonight?
Okay. Okay, we're going to go to December 18th, correct? No further notice? Okay, case number BA 17-13, Stavola Leasing LLC will be adjourned to December 18th with no further notice at 7:30.
Would you like a extension of time, just in case it expires December 30th?
Nope, we'll get one at December 18th. And if it's snowing, then we can request one. What other, what other cases we have on for that night?
Right now, nothing.
Good. Don't, don't put anything else on there. Okay, uh, I- Eileen, are we doing anything for Christmas? Do we want to do that on the 18th?
I believe we are, and I believe that's when we're doing it.
Do you, what, about 6:00, 6:30?
Yeah, between 6:00 and 6:30 in the kitchen, and then come in here at 7:30.
Okay. All members-
Right, Mika?
Where are they? Did you just hear that? Uh, Mr. Bloom objects to that, by the way.
It's a holiday get-together, Mr. Bloom.
Okay, there you go. I had to do that. Got him all red there.
You bring some good Jewish food.
Is there any further business of the board? No. CNN can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Martins.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning Board adjustments adjourned at 8:55.